... of the United States of America and to be republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, and with that said, traditionally, and the board can now choose someone to run the meeting in the absence of the supervisor, and I would invite either Trustee Bletcher or Trustee Porcelli to make a motion.
I would move to have Treasurer David Nado chair this meeting.
A second.
A motion and a second to have Treasurer Nado host this meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone against? None. So the motion passes. Treasurer Nado, we pass the baton over to you to run this meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Connor. I also want to mention that Trustee Jaeger is still deployed and isn't expected back until this weekend or early next week. So that was the reason for his absence tonight. At this time, I'd like to... Do we have additions or deletions to the agenda? And I have... I have a few. First, I'd like to make a motion to add Action Item 10, which is to hire the Community Development DDA Director.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? I'd also like to make a motion, or entertain a motion, to delete Consent Agenda Number Four, which is the appointment of an alternate for the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Here, none. That motion passes. And then, I would like to add... Oops. I'll make a motion to add Action Item Number 11, which is to... And I'll have Burke read that motion.
Okay. It's to add the adoption of a tentative agreement between the Township of Grozil and the POAM, based on the presentation made at our closed session this evening.
Second.
Take the motion, the longer motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So we've added two action items and deleted Consent Agenda. I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve the agenda as amended.
I support that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. And I believe Chief Carmack would like to come up and introduce a new police officer.
Hello. Thanks for giving us a moment of your time. I'd like to introduce our new hire. We started on June 6th. He started and sworn in on June 6th as our latest police officer, Tyler Blackman. Blackman. He applied here in September, and he's waited the entire time through all the processes we've had, and he's made it clear throughout the process that this is where he wants to work. He's wanted to be here for... He's got some connections in the department, and he's wanted to work here. He's got a little background in him. He's from Downriver, so he knows the area. He has got his bachelor's degree in business administration. And then, last five years, he's worked in Detroit, and then in the Special Ops Unit and in the Rural Patrol. Just a little bit of a background on him. And so he's been here a week, so...
And he's still smiling.
Yes. So... Any questions, or congratulations?
No, just congratulations to Officer Blackman.
Well, one second, Officer. You might just want to add that we hadn't intended on making this hire quite so early, but circumstances allowed for it to happen, and it's taken care of in the budget. And so we were able to bring Officer Blackman on three months earlier than we initially expected.
He's a good applicant. We didn't want to lose him also, so...
So no. That was important.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity, and I understand my responsibilities to the community, and I look forward to a long career here. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Officer Blackman.
Stay safe. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to thank Chief Carmack for making this possible. You have spent a lot of time with the budget. You've done an awful lot of work with trying to find advantages, disadvantages, to bringing on this person, and you persuaded me in a brief conversation, at least as brief as I can be, I think it was about a half an hour, forty-five minutes, and you made it crystal clear the benefits. We're not just hiring a person to plug a hole on a shift. We're bringing somebody on board that gives you a lot of flexibility and provides good service to the community and is going to improve the department more than just by adding a body to that. And I personally want to say thank you, Chief, for doing that.
That wasn't just me. It's also Deputy Pallan and Administrative Secretary Ms. Hancock. We all did a lot of work in crunching the numbers to get that information to you guys.
Great work, and it's not just filling a hole. So I was persuaded and was somewhat skeptical because I didn't think we needed to do that, but you gave the benefits of bringing this person on board, and it's more than just a person and a body. You have some great flexibility now for education and other things. So thank you for that, Chief, and thank you for your time.
Freedom. So, thank you, guys. Anything else?
Thank you.
No. Thank you, Chief. Agenda items only. Please state your address, and comments are limited to three minutes.
Kevin Flavin, Park Lane, Grozil. I'm coming up this evening to talk about the action item, Grozil Cell Tower asset offer to purchase. There seems to be a question about purchases and lease and that sort of thing. I'd like the public to know that this is a $2.1 million deal, where, as far as I can tell, there hasn't been a discussion with the public about how... why we're selling them. There should be a... At a minimum, the Michigan Township Association says that the public should have an opportunity to discuss major expenditures, purchases, sales of public property, or property that is for the public good, and that hasn't been done in this case. I think that the minimum that the public taxpayer deserves is the ability to hear what the projections are, why we're doing this, and what the $2.1 million is going to be used for. It seems to me that as part of the best practices, again, the best practices, government officials are supposed to include the public, and the people that manage these pieces of property and the township for us are supposed to bring us and include the taxpayer in what's going on. We don't do that here very much, if at all, and it's way overdue. So ask your elected officials what they're using $2.1 million for. Ask Ann Dorzniak to explain it in a public meeting. And, Mr. Thiel, we should have a public meeting, and we should find out how our funds are being used, what are the money that... Money that we need to do a new sewage plant. There's lots of needs and not enough funding. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flavin.
Mr. Carmison. Greg Carmerson, resident of Clinton Township, homeowner, taxpayer, 21228 East River. I want to comment on several items on the agenda today. It's a busy agenda, so I want to try and keep it brief. First of all, on the fire mileage, I'm very encouraged to see the fire mileage on the agenda. I think the Commission, the Fire Commission, has done excellent work in evaluating the needs and priorities of the department, and I'm glad to see that it actually is coming up for a vote this year. I think there's been some concern in the community that it wasn't going to come up, and we need to do everything possible to fund public safety, both police and fire. And I know we have a mileage renewal for the police coming up. I think we need to take a look at updating the five-year plan for the Police Department, and looking at that for funding for next year. We definitely need to adequately fund our police and fire both. Board appointment that's being done today, I attended the meetings last year, or last week, rather, seems like a while ago, and although I do have some reservations about the methodology that was used for the appointment, I think we... I think the board reached an excellent decision with Kyle DeBose, and I think he'll serve the committee very well. On the cell tower...
Greg, can you repeat that, please, one more time?
I...
The excellent part, Greg.
I think the board made an excellent decision, and I always credit the board when they make a decision that I think was good. But I do have some reservations about the process, but I think that's for future things to discuss.
Thank you.
On the cell tower, I know there's a presentation tonight, and I want to reserve my full judgment on it until I hear the presentation. I think it would have been helpful to have had this presentation at a public hearing or a study session, so that the public could actually have some time to understand this. It is a complex issue. There's a lot of considerations. We're talking about a 75-year lease. I think about it this way. This was 1947, and we were thinking about what in the year 2022 would be going on, and trying to value an asset for 75 years of use. That would be extraordinarily difficult to do. I think it's the kind of thing that a commission should review. Unfortunately, we had a Communications Commission, but unfortunately, it was dissolved some years ago, so this is the type of thing that unfortunately is not reviewed by a commission. I would like to see a professional appraisal. As somebody... I worked in the commercial real estate industry for a time, and one of the things that we always looked at, every property is unique. Industry standards are good, but properties are unique, and they need valuation. Also, do we have an ordinance that's adequate to regulate a cell tower on Grozil? I don't think we actually have a cell tower ordinance. Finally, there's two trustees that won't... Well, now, three trustees won't be voting on this tonight. Two that couldn't be here ahead of time. We knew Trustee Jaeger is deployed in active duty, and we have a new trustee will be taking place, being sworn in, and will meet in July. I think this would probably be better to come up in July for a final vote, and so that all seven members of the board can vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carmison. Any other comments? See? Mr. Freo? No email comments. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the consent agenda. And I would like to make a motion to approve Consent Agenda 22-025, which includes the following minutes of the May 23rd, 2022 regular meeting. Check registers dated through June 10th, 2022. Approval to process and distribute payments through July 1, 2022. And Item Four was deleted earlier.
I will second that motion.
Then, all in favor of approving Consent Agenda 22-025?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent Agenda is approved. And Action Item Number One. Then, I would like to make a motion based upon a recommendation from the Township's Cell Tower Council that the Grozil Township Board hereby approve an offer from Tower Point for a 75-year lease for township-owned cell tower assets.
I will second that motion.
Then, before we have Mr. Forrester come up and explain this arrangement to us, right now, the cell tower generates, and it's down now to about $100,000 per year in revenue, revenue to the township. The intention, or the financial impact, the proceeds from the sale would be deposited to the Township of Grozil MERS Retiree Health Funding Vehicle. And that, once it's deposited in the health funding account, it will be drawn down on to make the annual payments that are required, and the savings to the general fund from not making the payments to the retiree health fund would then be distributed to the Centennial Farm, the Recreation Commission, and to the public safety building accounts to replace the annual revenue that had been allocated to their respective budgets. Mr. Forrester, if you would.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm Jeff Forrester, and I want to... You know, the issues that we saw here from the citizens earlier, all good questions, all good thoughts and so forth. I want to tell you a little bit about who I am and what I'm doing negotiating cell towers. I think that might help clarify a little bit. The last 11 years of my career at Ford, I had a telecommunications portfolio worth about a half a billion dollars. And I negotiate everything from plant floor cell phones, or payphones, rather, to transponder agreements. And one of the last things I did was I worked in Washington, DC, doing the transponder, satellite beaming into Mexico for Ford Star. And so I've got a huge resume full of telecommunications experience, and that's in 2004, when I was on the board, I started taking care of the towers, cell towers, started negotiating the agreements and so on and so forth. Most communities have already sold their... You know, many communities have already sold their towers. You know, I've seen deals that... I haven't seen a lot of good deals that they've had, but a lot of them will get kind of duped into selling for... Well, they'll... They don't get the best deal possible by a long shot. But at any rate, the... And I wouldn't let them sell the towers here all the time that I've been around here since, like I said, since 2004, for the simple reason that the money we were making off of them was better than the money we could make off of selling them, you know? So more recently, it got very popular. We kept... We became the belle of the ball because everybody just kept... Tower companies just kept trying to get our... Trying to get us to sell the towers. These ad hoc quotes came in at about a million and a half, million, two, that kind of thing, which is still not justifiable, you know, based on the income we're making on the deal. And more recently, the increase in count of calls we're getting, they come in sometimes daily, you know? And so we decided to go out, and you'll recall from six months ago, I was here, and I said, "Let's talk to these suitors and see, you know, what they're... If they're going to put their money where their mouth is." So I ran an RFP, and Derek and I did, and I did it in several phases. I'll tell you a little bit about that. The first... What happened was, when I went and solicited all these cell tower companies, I come down to the four, mainly ones Unison, Symphony Wireless, Everest Wireless, and Tower Point. We ran the RFP and aggressive, made them sharpen their pencils and everything else, and two of the four were eliminated, and that was Unison and Symphony Wireless. They were... The other two had more serious bids, Everest and Tower Point, and they won the first round. So we went into a second round, and we... The second round results, Tower Point came out ahead at $2.1 million to Everest, $2.1 million. And they're both top-shelf companies, and we spoke with them, and like I mentioned in my brief here, that they seem to know more about our property than we knew about it. And that was a very... Both of them would be an excellent choice, but I watched Tower Point squirm and reach $2.1 million, and so they won me over there, the extra $100,000. The Tower Point currently has completed quite a bit of its due diligence on the deal. They don't have a contract in place with the township, and as I mentioned six months ago, I'd come back to the board and see if they wanted to go ahead and go through with the sale, if it actually... If we could actually get them to come to the numbers that we wanted, which at the time we were talking $2 million, and we're $2.1 million right now. They don't want to spend any more on due diligence unless they get a clear, "Yes, we'll do it if we can get $2.1 million." And that's really why I'm here, for that vote. Now, let me tell you how this works. If you say yes on the $2.1 million tonight, I go back and negotiate with them, because the contracts that they gave me need negotiation still. They're not... They don't reflect the best interests of Grozil at this moment, but I don't have a bully pulpit to work with. I can't go in there and say, "The board will do this if you say that," or so on and so forth. What you're giving me is a bully pulpit to go back and beat him up with. I can get what I want out of him at that point. If it comes in one penny less, I like the discretion to say yes to the deal. You know, I like the discretion to say, "Let's go to the close." So that's what I'm getting tonight, is just your approval to do that. It's a 75-year lease. The industry standard's 99. We tried to push that back without affecting the price, and 75 is where we ended up. $2.1 million, lump sum at close, and that's 21 times annual earnings. And as I mentioned, the... And this is how cell towers are priced out. It's annual earnings, and the industry average for a really good deal is 17.5 times annual earnings, and we're looking at 21 times that, which is pretty exceptional. I think, I mean, I highly suspect that there's a lot of venture capital money out there looking for a safe place to hide, and so they're paying a premium just to park somewhere where the money won't go away, and there's just a lot of that money out there for that kind of thing. But I believe that's what's behind the higher price. The... Again, we discussed some of the issues about why you might want to sell this asset, or lease it, actually. I keep saying sell, but it's actually a lease. Right now, the township has a lot of overhead maintaining what's going on with the tower. It's... Ann has to do quite a bit of bookkeeping with all of them. There's any number of phone calls that come in that end up routed to me about half the time, and it's... There's basically an administrative overhead that comes with the existing way we operate the towers. The other thing is, if I get hit by a bus, you're going to pay somebody $600, $700, $800, $900 an hour to do this kind of stuff, if you want to stay on top of it. Typically, what happens is it goes to a local attorney somewhere that doesn't have any experience in telecom, and then you get ripped off. And these are 20-, 30-year deals, so if you just get ripped off a little bit, it accumulates over time, and you really get burned. And they're getting more and more complex. And what happens with electronics? It gets smaller, and it does more all the time. So it's... We're in the Internet of Things and everything else. We've got a much more complex world out there, where it's not just antennas in a farmer field any longer. So it's a very precarious business, and you're making $100,000 a year, which means you can't afford to hire somebody to stay on top of that, at the money that you're making off of it. And guess what? You're going to lose money going forward, simply because you're going to mismanage it at some point, you know? And that's what... And not... I don't mean it facetiously. I mean, it's just very easy to do because it's a very precarious technology, very precarious business. So we talked about those kind of advantages of avoiding that, and the money you're making on it, if you can make 5% a year, you're replacing your income forever, effectively, any income lost on that. You know, and it's... We talk about $100,000 a year right now. Sprint's going away. They already took the towers off there and moved over to behind the post office with... Well, T-Mobile's got new antennas out there that carry the old Sprint spectrum, but you're losing that income. So it's really not $100,000 a year any longer, you know? So that's... Those kinds of things keep changing. Mergers, the technology, everything else, and that's why a safe bet is to have something you can invest to make an income off of. That's really... Well, I wanted to say one other thing. At the beginning of the year, we talked about my charging the township a cap of $10,000 to do this if the deal didn't go through, and that's because for my time and so forth. What I found out was AT&amp;T helped themselves to some property behind the cell sites, and this is what I call found money, because technically, they should be paying back rent on that property that they took from us. They had no proper approval to use that, because only a township trustee can grant a land property interest. And so they helped themselves to that. They moved easements. They did everything else. So in this last negotiation round, I told them, "You're going to pay us $35,000 just to get us to come to the table, because you owe us back rent and everything else." They balked and basically figured they'd wait until I went away, you know, that kind of thing. And so now, with the tower deal, is out there in the rumor mill, AT&amp;T come back winning the deal with us, because they wanted some other things, a right of first refusal and a few other things, and I told them, "Well, it's $50,000 now." And they... So they basically quit talking to me on that. They know they're not going to get the deal from us. They ripped us off totally on that. But anyway, Tower Point has a joint venture-type relationship with AT&amp;T, and they... I told them about this property. We told Tower Point and Everest about the money that was owed to us, and Tower Point said, "Well, I'll pay $20,000 to take care of that." And it was money that, effectively, the money I found, that's what would pay me. The township doesn't pay a dime for me. Tower Point would pay me that, and then the deal goes through. I get paid either way. I get, you know, make more through Tower Point, but Tower Point pays that. Township pays nothing for my services on that. So that was the last thing I wanted to mention about that. Any questions, or...
I have a couple, Jeff. I think you indicated that normal commission for something like this would be 3%.
Yeah.
And my math is 3% on $2 million is about $60,000.
Yeah, $63,000, which you'd normally pay for that. And that's just... That's closing a warehouse sale on a commercial property.
Right.
This is... Realistically, you'd probably pay a lot more than that for this, but that's... $63,000 passes the straight face test for a corporate, or selling a corporate warehouse or something like that.
So all of the citizens watching at home are here tonight. A little bit of history, I believe. Ann, you brought this to our attention about a year ago, because you kept receiving unsolicited requests for documenting an interest in purchasing a tower. And if I'm quoting you correctly, you looked at it and said, "Don't know what this means, but it's a lot more money than what we thought." And your recommendation was that we reach out to somebody in the industry that does that. This board ultimately looked at Jeff Forrester some seven months ago, eight months ago, and said, "Jeff, you've been a past board member. We're somewhat familiar with you. We're also somewhat familiar with your background at Ford Motor. You came in and did a presentation, and in January, we decided to move forward by having Jeff do an RFP, so that we would have proposals for purchase of the tower." So this isn't something that just happened yesterday or last week or last month. We've been working on this effectively for about a year. You came to us in January at a meeting and said, "Here's where we are in the state of the industry, and here's where we're going, and we want to test the waters to see what's available." When I do work for real estate, and I'm representing someone who has a piece of property that's for sale, typically, you'd look at it and say, "I don't have an idea what the market is, so let's go out and get an appraisal." In this case, we did that by you going out and testing the waters, as I'm understanding your interpretation.
That's right.
Now, when I go out and look for a market analysis or an appraisal, I will look at it and say to, let's say, Thomas Sorty is the Realtor. "Mr. Sorty, I want you to go ahead and give me an idea what this thing is worth, based on comparables, comparable size, comparable location, all of the comparable conditions there." And then Realtor Sorty would come back and say, "This is what I think it's worth, $200,000 or $300,000." But ultimately, when I counsel a client, it is with the idea that there's only one number that matters. But ultimately, when I counsel a client, it is with the idea that there's only one number that matters. And that is whatever Mr. or Ms. Market tells us. And by that, I mean, what kind of purchase offers do you get? What kind of action do you have? And what are people talking? We've done that here with Jeff Forrester going out and talking to the four large players that are in the area. Two that come back and say, well, I can't do it because we're going through a merger. Or the second one saying, I've got something different in mind. So Mr. Market or Ms. Market is telling us it is somewhere around 2 to 2.1 million dollars. Am I correct in understanding that?
It's the correct line of thinking, but, but the industry average is about 17.5. You know, so I mean, my phone's going to ring when, when the word gets out that we got 21X for those towers. So it's, it's, it's just a sweet deal. It's, you're not going to, you're not going to get a better deal.
So we went with a better realtor than Thomas Sorty. We've gone with Jeff Forrester then who's telling us this is what I think the market is.
Yeah, I know what's going on in the industry and it's 21X is phenomenal. So.
Next question. This is, when you were on the board and you had a labor contract that came to you either as a POM or an AFSMI contract or something, you would typically execute what's known as a tentative agreement. I'm understanding this to be a tentative agreement. This is not something where we have a contract that we are bound to go forward and execute the contract. There is no contract in front of us tonight. And there will not be until we get a firm proposal, contract in place that is beyond the tentative agreement. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah. A yes vote tonight gives me the bully pulpit to go back and, and polish that up and make sure that it reflects our best interest.
So if we have a full commission come forward in, I'm going to pick a month, August, for lack of a better month, either sooner or later. And we have our proposal come in from the winning bidder, if you will, that is ready for us to ink and approve. It'll be with a full board at that time and not with a board of four as tonight, correct?
Yeah, the close, yeah, there'll certainly be a, the next, the next step would be a close if we get everything we, that we want and they don't balk.
But there is nothing that if we vote to approve your bully pulpit tonight, that we're going ahead and binding ourselves to a 75 year lease and a commitment that will be made by four board members and without any public input or knowledge.
Well, you'll certainly have to be involved because the township trustees are the ones that, only, as I understand municipal law, and I'm no expert in that area, but only township trustee can grant a land interest from the township. So, yeah, it would have to be, it would have to be something that you ultimately agree with. So.
All of the issues regarding the value, the appraisal and public input, there's still time for that. That doesn't end tonight. That's going to be prior to the final contract, correct?
Well, if we get everything that went in the final contract, the next thing they're going to do is close. And we're going to say, go no, go on that. But I don't see, I see that as a decision. In my understanding, it'd just be a decision of the supervisor signing it as, as the board voted yes to, if we get everything we want, that's what we're going to do.
And if we don't get something, we're not locked into it then?
Correct.
What I think what Carl, not to put words in your mouth maybe to make it more simple, is that a vote yes today does not approve the sale. The vote yes today simply gives you a next, the next step to negotiate
Yes.
based on a number. And if the negotiation doesn't come through the way we want it to, we are not committed to a yes vote. We still have an opportunity at the next, at the next phase.
Yeah, if you, if you tell me yes on the, on the way the deal is that I'm presenting tonight and I get anything shy of that, the answer is, I can't, I don't have the discretion to do that. So it would be, it would be, I'm not even going to bring it back to the board. I'm just telling them no. So if you want to, if you want to discuss it back and forth, we can do that at that point.
But you will still bring it back to the board to get a firm yes?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, that's what we're looking for is, you know, we, we want to, I, I think there's a sense that we want to say yes, but we don't want to commit at this point.
Yeah.
We want to give you
Not with a small board.
We want to give you the power to negotiate further, but not necessarily commit to this 100%. At least I'm speaking for myself at that point. I, I think, you know, for the community, I want you to be able to go further.
Right.
But I'm also not convinced yet. And I want to hear more. You know, Ann has made some presentations to us too
Right.
that show us how this, this money can be used in the long term. And, but I would like to see how far you can push this.
Yeah, it's, I, I can't without, without a very strong yes. I can't, I don't have a bully pulpit. But, but I think the carrier will be okay with that. I think Tower Company will be okay with that. Let me, I'm
I just had a couple, oh, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Finish what you were saying if that was it. I just had a couple other questions.
No, I'm, I'm finished.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Jeff, in reading the paperwork, if you could just explain to me on here, I get it that this is the sale of the cell tower. And then I'm reading a lease of 75 years. Can you explain the difference or what, what does that exactly mean?
The sale or the lease?
Well, if, if we're voting on the sale of the cell tower and then I'm reading that it's a 75 year lease. Is there a difference in commercial real estate of sale, leases?
It was just, sale's a poorly used term. It's actually a lease of our existing contract suite. So we're, we're really leasing land to the carriers. And, and, you know, we've got the contract suite that identifies our annual revenue from the carriers. That's what we're leasing is that cell tower collection of assets.
So what happens in the 76th year?
It reverts back to the township.
Okay. And the second question in reading the paperwork, I know that you did an analysis on it. You spoke of that during your presentation. What is the difference between appraisal and an analysis when it comes to, would you call this commercial property? I mean, it's township owned, but.
Well, I, I use commercial property because it was a, an easy analogy, an easy comparison. But towers are priced out based on annual revenues. And that's why I say 17.5 is, is the industry average. Well, actually, it's industry above average. That's great for the industry. But
So an analysis is deeper than an appraisal?
Well, the only appraising that they do on cell tower assets is based on the annual revenue. And so it's how many times annual revenue can you get for it? And that's, that's how it's done in the industry. There's really no other approach to it.
Purchase of a business, you value the business based upon its annual revenue, basically.
Same kind of thing, yeah. Yeah.
Chairman, I have one last question. It would be of the township attorney, anything we need to, Tom, talk about before we go further on this. I think Jeff's made it clear that we're having a 75 year lease essentially, and we're selling the rights to use the tower, as I understand it. Anything further, Tom, we need to look at?
No. And I, I'd just like to say, so I've worked with Mr. Forrester for a while here now. And I know there's been a reference that we don't have an ordinance in Grozeal, which is correct. But we did some time ago, and Mr. Forrester and I worked on together when 5G started to come around, whether or not we were going to create an ordinance for that effect. And I believe the board at that time specifically didn't want to inhibit in any way that, you know, the, the companies coming to Grozeal. But I, I will just say this, I've worked with Jeff not only in this community, but in other communities. There's nobody that understands this stuff better. He's taught me more about this type of stuff than, than anything. You, you can't, I know he's trying to make it sound like, like commercial real estate or something else. You can't compare it to that. It's, it's strictly a revenue generating source. And everything that he's explained to me and everything I've seen everywhere else is exactly what Jeff told me nine months ago was going to start to happen. So he's got it all down. And I have all the confidence in the world. Anything he's telling you is accurate and appropriate. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Treasurer?
Yes.
Can you speak a little bit about what kind of controls a township might have on the property through its contract with the purchaser or the, the person that we're leasing, the company releasing the property to? As far as what terms and conditions we can have in there about aesthetics or whatever you can put in there to make sure our interests are protected?
Yeah, thanks. That's, thanks for bringing that up. That, the one, as I mentioned earlier, technology shrinks over time, gets less expensive and so on, so forth. It, it could be that, you know, 20 years down the road, we need one tower to do the work of the, of the three. At, at which point, Tower Point claimed they would relinquish those towers and demolish them. You know, get them, get them off the property so you don't have eyesores out there. We'd get aesthetic control in the sense that if they wanted to put some monstrous looking antenna array out there and it, it was an eyesore, we could have input on that. And, and that's going to be part of, I'm going to solidify this in our agreement when I go back and tell them, you know, that I've got the bully pulpit. But, but the, the last thing that's, that's kind of one of the most unique twists about this whole thing is they're a tower company and they manage towers. We're not a tower company. We're a township that's managing towers that were once antennas in a farmer's field and are now super complex. Right now, if you get AT&amp;T, does my phone work here? Yes or no? If you've got Verizon, does my phone work here? Yes or no? Same with Sprint, same with T-Mobile. We got one throat to choke now. If they take those towers, you know, if they manage those towers for us, and they are a tower management company. And I, and I talked and I told them, I said, you're going to be the one throat we're going to choke about our reception on the island. I understand, I understand. And they're going to have the carrier's ear. We don't. They don't listen to us. We're just two, we're small potatoes. So they don't listen to us. So there's, there's going to be some advantages of, of letting a professional management company take that over instead of, instead of hobbling along, hoping that we don't get a dirty deal by not understanding the technology or, or the management that we need to understand in order to manage those towers or in order to manage those carriers. So there's, there's a lot of good sense thinking behind it. And like I said, or like you pointed out, thank you, that we do, we will, we will retain some aesthetic control over it, which is something that we really don't get with three carriers doing three different things or four carriers doing four different things. So. Very good.
Mr. Treasurer, I know we had talked a little bit about the financial end of things, where the revenue would go and how that would be used. I think you maybe had explained exactly what was going to happen with that. Are there any areas of clarification that the board would like to, to hear relative to that plan?
Mr. Manager, you and Ann might just give a short rundown of, again, the investment of 2, 2.1 million dollars. What that would generate, you know, each year in a secure investment. And, you know, Jeff had pointed out that 100 grand a year is what we had been used to, but it's starting to decline. That you see that this offers us some stability by giving us the capital to generate the funds that we need every year. So if you could address that.
Let me just go into some history because I'm the only one that's been here this long. But when Jeff says 2004, it was probably going on about six years from that. So this has been going on for about 20 years and not knowing where this was taking us. And the company started merging and we started losing revenue. And we're like, okay, where's this technology taking us? And 2010 was the first time we actually had a serious offer. And in 2010, the serious offer was 700,000 dollars. And at that point, we did the projections. We said, it's still not worth it. We, we still, it's still not worth to make that, that decision. And so we kept saying, okay, if you give us 2 million dollars, we might start thinking about it. Well, just before that started coming, that's when we said, we don't, let's just, we need a professional. We don't know where this is going anymore. And that's when, when Jeff came into play. So, so that's why he's here and that's why he's presenting the software. But it has literally been 20 years of this, of phone calls and companies and, and all that. So what we decided to do, well, with the treasurer and supervisor and stuff, and what we decided to do with the money. Right now, everyone talks about our unfunded liabilities with healthcare and pension. So we decided that this is a windfall. This is a win-win. So if we get this money and we put it into our health savings account and it just sits there and gains interest, right now, they project the extrarities at 6.5%. I can't make that on the market. So we can sit anywhere. And we just didn't want it sitting in general fund, making nothing. So we're having our money work for us. So as he said, if we put in the health savings account, right now, the state of Michigan does not require you to fund your health savings account. We do. This will just let it sit there. We can, as everyone does, so we're going to make interest. And we're going to actually, the 100,000 dollars, just at 5%, we're going to give it back to the public safety building. And so everything remains even. The money's in the bank. It helps us with our unfunded liability and the healthcare. To us at this time, it seems financially a win-win. And like he said, we're getting a, a great deal and it's time, it's time. So we've been looking at this for a long time.
Yeah, I'm no finance person, but 2.1 million down economy is huge. So.
Does anyone have any more questions? We got what we're going to do with it?
It, it was also mentioned about the cable, you know, the, the communication commission or cable commission. And I think Jeff, you served on that for a time as well.
Right.
And I think kind of what happened over the years is that it, it became more of a communication commission in terms of helping manage our GitV because the nature of the communications agreements with the cable companies changed. So that the state basically said, we no longer had the upper hand on control of our cable arrangements. They basically said, we had to do what, you know, AT&amp;T or whoever was in charge. So I think they're, just like with the technology, I think in the, in the legislative side, what a commission had started working on soon became too complicated for a commission of essentially, you know, amateurs. And I think that's also when the township started to look more to you because you're a professional. And when you came on board, you identified already some areas where we were spending too much money on our telecommunications even. So I think that this very quickly outpaced what we as a township were able to control. And so I, I just wanted that to be out there, to be understood.
Kind of a short, cool story about that. Basically, AT&amp;T usurped our autonomy by going to the legislators and, and giving them money to, to allow them to come into our township without negotiating with us, you know, our township contract because we're getting money and channels from Comcast. AT&amp;T, we could effectively negotiate the same thing. At one point, the legislators in the state took that autonomy away from us. And, and on, basically they were saying AT&amp;T needs, needs to get in there quicker because it'll create jobs and blah, blah, blah. They sent that agreement over that we were supposed to effectively force to sign. And I butchered it and sent it back. And I was on the board of directors at, in Virginia for Enterprise Wireless. And I worked with another group of attorneys in DC. And they called me that night because the word got out that Grozeal told them where to stick that contract. And so it was just all the buzz for, so we were real popular all over the country there for about a day. But it was, and then the FCC called me and I just, I pointed out the errors and I said, you know, I'm not going to take this slop. I'm not going to sign it. And so they went back to AT&amp;T and gave them a good chat. And we got what we wanted. We got a clean deal then, the best we could get, which was ridiculous. They, we ended up getting 1% or 2%, something like that. But anyway, yeah, that's just, just another, another example of the kind of stuff that's been going on for years that, that we've been getting away with. And it's largely because I got a ton of experience with it and this is my town. I don't, I don't want my town to get a rotten deal. So. But we're, but we're not a tower, we're not a tower management company. And it's, I, I think it's, a deal like this is an opportunity to get out of pretending we are. So like I said, I need a, I need a strong yes so I can have a bully pulpit. And then I'd need a compelling reason to say no to them once they, once they're finished their due diligence. So if we get a compelling reason before that time, that's, I'll certainly relinquish it back to the township. Let the township do what they must. So.
I have a motion and support. And because this involves a sale of township assets, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote. So Mr. Porcelli?
Aye.
Mr. Fletcher?
Aye.
Clark O'Connor? Clark O'Connor.
Aye.
And I vote aye. And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate the work you did on this for us. Let's see. Ms. O'Connor, if you would like to take the next.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. I am delighted to make the motion that the Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby appoints Kyle DeBose as Township Trustee to fill the vacancy for the term ending November 20, 2024.
Second.
Well, I guess we can add that the township did go through a cycle of resume reviews in the public. We did do public interviews of, we initially started with six candidates, one withdrew at some point on the second night of interviews. And then the board did a ranking tally, which the supervisor and administrative staff tallied. And it came out that Mr. DeBose had won the majority support of the board members. And he has a long history on the island, his family has a long history on the island, and he has a history of participation on the Recreation Commission and as liaison, I believe, to the Bike, Path and Pedestrian Commission. But he is also very active in the community, and so that is a very brief history.
The other discussion from the board. Okay. This time, Groseal Township Board of Trustees hereby appoints Kyle DeBose as Township Trustee to fill the vacancy for the term ending November 20, 2024. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Kyle, welcome aboard.
Would you like to come say something?
Three minutes, Kyle.
Yes, you got it, you got it. Kyle DeBose, resident on West River. I don't know if folks will believe me when I say I really didn't expect to get this appointment. I put my name in fully expecting and wanting to do the work, and really grateful and honestly humbled in the trust that you all are showing in appointing me. I know I have a lot of work to do, gaining trust of the township employees that work really hard here to keep all us in good shape. I know a lot of us take it for granted, quite honestly. So I know I have work to do doing that, and work to do gaining the trust of the public. So I really want to work on those things, and we'll do it from, starting tomorrow, now that I've officially been voted in. I want to say a few words about the two others that came right behind me. I could say good words about everyone that applied to be trustee, but specifically Mr. Nelson, I served under him on the Rec Commission, and he just had a quiet way of doing work for the township that I don't think is valued a lot. And I mention that because I think a lot of township employees do that, and I know you all do that as well. And so I just wish that was valued more, and want to call that out, and just I'm grateful for Mr. Nelson, and hope he continues to put himself forward to serve us. And then Mr. Mills, and really the whole Mills family, they tried to run in the last election, and I think they had a real rough go of it. And I think they've shown, I mean, they both serve. Laura Mills was in the Navy, Mark Mills, of course, a police officer, and they've continued to put themselves forward to serve. And continues, and Mr. Mills is on a commission, I know, and continues to serve. So I think that's a good example for all of us, you know, is to try to keep serving through the difficulties. So I'm grateful to them too for putting their names forward, and really we'll try to be open to everyone as I move forward with this stuff. So, again, thank you all, and really appreciate the trust.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you, Kyle.
Next item on the agenda is to approve the language for the roads millage that will appear, if approved, on the November general election ballot. And the recommendation is, based upon a recommendation by the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the attached millage request language titled Millage for Improvements to Roads within the Township to be placed on the November 22 general election ballot. And I believe I have to read the...
I will give you a second.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Okay. The millage language will read on the ballot, "Millage for Improvements to Roads Within the Township. Shall the limitation on the amount of taxes which may be levied on taxable property in the township of Groseal, Michigan be increased by up to 1.4 mil, that's $1.40 per $1,000 of taxable value, for a period of 15 years, 2022 to 2037 inclusive, as new additional millage to provide funds for paying the costs of construction, improvements and maintenance to roads within the township, including paying the cost of debt service on bonds issued for such purposes. It is estimated that 1.4 mil would raise approximately $915,000 when first levied in 2022. Yes or no? Any questions from the board?
Would you like to invite Commission Chair Kostick up to...
Oh, Bill, did you want to add something?
Thank you.
Well, you read it very well. Thank you. And thank you, Carl, for your article. And you've said it all, and I think we've been working on this for a long time, and you are a member of our commission, Dave, liaison, so nothing more to add, I don't think. We hope that our commission believes, we've talked to several people, including Greg and others, we believe, as a commission, trying to work with Wayne County, that unless we do something on our own, we're not going to get these roads fixed. And it's been proven, because since 2015, when we had a campaign, 2018, when we had a campaign, the county hasn't fixed any roads since then. They have fixed our bridges, a couple of bridges, though. So there's some things we have to do on our own, and similarly, Canton Township's done this, and several cities in our area have passed road millages, because there's not enough, what's called Act 51 money, coming into the communities to allow you to rebuild, resurface, repair a lot of broken roads. So that's our belief. So thank you very much. We hope it passes.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I may make a comment.
Certainly.
Bill, when I sat down with you in your home for a couple of hours on that Sunday, and we went through all of the information and put that article together, and again, I thank you for your time, we had, as was noted, a number of interviews of potential board members, in addition to just Kyle. One of the comments that was made by Mr. Heil, Bill looked at it and said, "I understand the problem of funding road repairs." And he made the analogy, and this struck a chord with everybody that was interviewing. And he said, "If I am Wayne County and I have a pothole at Hagerty and Ford Road that takes 100,000 hits a day, or if I have a pothole at the foot of Gray's Drive and East River that takes 1,000 hits a day, and I have the same amount of money to fill both of those potholes," as Bill said succinctly, "I understand it's about compromise and effectiveness, so I'm going to put my money into that pothole in Canton, because that has that much more traffic." And I thought that was a good analogy as to what you and I spoke about, and some of the issues that are facing the drivers on Groseal as well as the residents. I thought that his analogy there was very appropriate, and that's what I understand the commission do have been looking at and making this recommendation. Very good. Thank you.
I would just like to point out, we had talked about a campaign. Again, we, as a township body and the commission, cannot, in effect, lobby for or against a millage proposal. But what we can do and will do is present the facts. And I think you have given us a sample of a presentation. I think we will make an effort in the next months to make sure as much information is made publicly available as possible. If interest exists, there can be a public forum. Oh, please.
Come back up, I appreciate it. As a matter of fact, our DPS Commission meets tomorrow night. And one of the things we're going to talk about tomorrow night, we already have talked about it, is that at our July meeting, our August, September and October meetings, we're going to, they're going to be like a public information meeting. We're going to talk about the road issue, answer questions, and we're preparing some written documents that we're going to mail to everybody and have as much information as we can available. So just making an announcement that we're going to have a public information meeting to start every one of our DPS Commission's meetings at 7:00 here in this room, July, the second Tuesday of July, August, September and October.
That's excellent.
People will be tired of talking about it, I suppose. Also, we're going to talk about the wastewater treatment proposal, which is on the primary ballot at our July meeting as well. So thank you.
Okay.
Thanks again, Bill.
Thank you for that follow-up.
I have a motion, we have a support. All in, I'll read it again. "Based upon a recommendation by the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the attached millage request language titled Millage for Improvements to Roads Within the Township to be placed on the November 2022 general election ballot." I guess, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? That's the language that will be on the ballot in November. Next item, Ms. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. "Based upon a recommendation by the Groseal Fire Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the attached millage request language titled Millage to Maintain Current Fire Department Operations to be placed on the November 2022 general election ballot." And, thank you. And so the millage language itself will be Millage to Maintain Current Fire Department Operations? And the question to put to the voters is, "Shall the limitation on the amount of taxes which may be imposed on taxable property in the township of Groseal, Michigan be increased by up to .75 mil, or 75 cents per $1,000 of taxable value, for a period of 10 years, 2023 to 2032 inclusive, as new additional millage to provide funds for the purpose of maintaining and operating the township fire department? A .75 mil increase will raise an estimated $513,750 when first levied in 2023." And then the question will be yes or no. As you know, we've had some conversations here at the board level, excuse me, and obviously concurrently at our Groseal Fire Commission meetings. And certain economic pressures of this time have made it extremely difficult for the department to maintain current operations under the current budget conditions. One of the issues cited was a, if I believe correctly, 26% increase in the cost of healthcare, which is our main way of compensating our volunteer firefighters. Obviously, everybody else also knows about the huge increases in the cost of just about everything, and which is putting a lot of pressure on the department. Then, at our last commission meeting, Chief Bowdre pointed out that the state has now also added a new layer of training requirements on our department and its personnel. And again, those, a lot of those programs are unfunded mandates that we have to find the budget to maintain. To that end, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, I would like to invite Chief Bowdre to come up and answer your questions and possibly say a few words.
Any questions on this, from any of the members? This millage that we're requesting is because of the added cost of the insurance and the added cost of the training. Also, we've had growing costs involved with our call volumes. Across the board, we're getting hit with growing costs. Our current millage has been in place for 62 years now. And it's, we've taken as far as we can, but we need a little bit of help to continue offering the insurance to our members, and our added costs of training and everything else across the board that it takes to run a fire department. We've done well for this amount of time with the current millage, but we do need a boost to get us through and keep us going for the next 10 years. And with this millage increase, we should be able to get through the next 10 years no problems. We've done projections across the board, trying to look at every different way possible, and this millage will get us through. May I ask or answer any of the questions?
We could also add, this, of course, is the operations millage, it's not the capital or equipment millage. So this will be used strictly for our operations. And like the DPS Commission, the Fire Commission intends to go forward with public education. We have a, we are one of the largest townships in the state, and we have a volunteer fire department which faces a different set of challenges than, say, a professional fire department. But we've also determined over the years that this also provides the best value and highest level of service available to township residents at the cost that we have right now. And so it is, it is going to eventually have to evolve, but we think we can continue with this model. We just, because of these financial challenges, need the time and the money to do so. Also, again, our voting yes tonight simply puts this on the ballot, and then it's up to the voters of the community to decide whether or not they will support this millage. Thank you, Chief.
Very well spoken. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chair, I have a comment as well with that. Chief, you've been on the department for decades. I remember 15 years ago, when we had a severe recession and a downturn, and the Fire Commission and the Fire Department said, "We have a fund balance where we can elect not to levy tax." And I think that went on for a couple of years. And when I look at voting for or against something like this, I look at what I consider to be the integrity of the people that are involved in both the Fire Department, the boots on the ground, no pun intended, as well as the commission and leadership there. And when I sit back and look at 15 years ago, maybe we had different people, but we have the same commitment there. When the department forgave, if I can use that term, or decided not to levy and asked the board not to levy the taxes for, I believe it was, two years, because of a fund balance, that spoke volumes about the integrity of the people in the department. And I see the same thing today, so I have no hesitation about voting yes on this.
Thank you. What I'd like to say is, since this meeting began, we just got toned out for another rescue. This is our second tonight. There are hard-working, dedicated firefighters, and we just want to continue serving the community, and we are grateful for everything. If it's okay with you, I'll respond to this call.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks for us.
Hey. And I know we have a motion and a second, but I'll repeat this, based upon a recommendation by the Groseal Fire Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves the attached millage request language titled "Millage to Maintain Current Fire Department Operations" to be placed on a November 22 general election ballot. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, that motion passes.
Thank you.
Let's see. I guess, I guess this one is mine. At this time, I'd like to make a motion that the Groseal Township Board hereby approve the hire of Brittany Boober to the position of Assistant Permits Coordinator/Ordinance Assistant/DPS Secretary effective June 14, 2022.
Second.
I might point out that Brittany is currently a part-time employee, but this is a newly-created position of, again, Assistant Permits Coordinator, Ordinance Assistant, and DPS Secretary. That position was recently advertised, applications were solicited, we received six applications, and two interviews were conducted. The selected candidate was the unanimous decision of the interview group that included members of the Community Development Department, Township Manager's Office, and the Clerk's Office. This is a union position, and wages and benefits are set via the collective bargaining agreement between the TPOAM and the Township of Groseal. And attached, you'll have her resume and so forth. Support?
Carl did support.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. Any questions from the board? No?
I would just like to say, when you read the job description, it kind of shows the efforts we've made over the years to, you know, combine positions to get the best we can. And we've basically rolled three individuals into one here. But I've had the pleasure of working with Brittany, she supports the Planning Commission at its meetings. Obviously, she was trained and taught by Lori, for whom I have the highest respect. And I think that, looking at your resume, at your past experience, we're very happy to have, I'm very happy to be able to say yes.
I'm just wondering how that position description is going to get on her business cards, but anyway.
We're going to need a bigger card.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and this one is mine. Pending a recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves adjustments to both water and sewer rates commencing with the July 2022 billing from $11.68 to $11.84 per thousand gallons of water, and from $4.24 to $4.42 per thousand gallons, and that's the sewer rate. These are the rates that were budgeted in our 2022-2023 budget that was put together earlier this year. And the increases are roughly 1.35% for water and 4% on the sewer rate. They were recommended during the budget by the DPS commission, and the next DPS commission meeting is tomorrow evening, where it's on our agenda for approval, and I don't anticipate any, any issues with that. And the water rate adjustments are based upon the increases in the water rates that we receive directly from Great Lakes Water Authority. Is there anything else to add to that, Derek?
Sewer was based upon quantity of sales decrease.
Okay.
Sorry. I just had to comment, when you're done, I thought you were done.
No, no. Go ahead. I'm done.
I just wanted to mention real quick, obviously, this is my opinion only, and I'm glad William is out there in the audience. I mentioned this when we were having the budget meetings, and it obviously wasn't the time to talk about it, but I know in the past, and I'm going to be voting yes for this, I know that we need this, but in the past, I know that revenues have gone down, and we've had to raise rates to make the same revenue we had or to run what we have to do. People have their rates raised, so they use less water. When you use less water, the revenue to the DPS, or let's call it DPW for lack of a better term, is lowered. If the revenues are lowered, you need so much money for your budget. And what I'd just like to see, I don't have the answer, Bill, and I'm not just one up here to talk and say, you know, do this, do that, but I try to come up with something. I just wish maybe we could figure something out, because it will be a vicious cycle. The higher my water bill goes up, the less I do, this is just me personally, the less I use. When you used to pay 200, and I'm paying 5, 6, 7 in the summer, then I try to cut back on water. But if I'm doing what everybody else is doing, or they're doing what Joe's doing, then we have less revenue coming in. If we have less revenue coming in, we have to raise the rates again to make the revenue for the budget. I just, and I don't have the answer. I'm not a mathematician in this area to, to figure out what, you know, what we can do. I just, I wish we could figure something out, and I thought about, you know, making it up on volume with a little less rate, but I was told that won't work either. So, maybe there isn't, oh yeah, no, I'm just, this is my opinion, Bill, I'm just saying, I just wish somehow we could come up with something, because it's going to be a continual vicious cycle, and the higher the water rates go, I guarantee, I'm going to use less, I don't know about everybody else in Groseal, but I would assume they are going to do what I'm doing, and it's just going to continue in this manner for the next how many years.
Free's a really good point. You're absolutely right, because that is our reaction. We're going to use less, and then it becomes a vicious cycle.
I don't have the answer.
Thank you for bringing it up, and, Bill?
Well, I wouldn't characterize it the way you did as a vicious cycle, but it is something that's happening. And even myself, back in the recession, 2010, 11, when that hit, I started, I didn't put my sprinkler on unless things were really dry, and I ran it manually and tried to use less. But I want to just say this. First of all, when we look at water sewer rates, and this started back then, we really were careful about it. I mean, Anne would be, would be able to tell you that there were a couple of years where I didn't want to raise a penny, even though at that time it was Detroit that was raising our water rates. And, and in fact, I think one year we did pass on it, and we've looked at this very seriously. Now, what you've got to keep in perspective is this, when the last election for Township Board, there was a lot of criticism out there, or discussion out there about not having enough money invested in our infrastructure, specifically mentioned were roads, of course, water and sewer lines. So what you have to understand is, through some innovative financing, in the last six years or so, and I was thinking about it while you started to talk, I think our capital program for water main replacement, last year was $4 million. Two years before that, it was on East River, it was a million and a half dollars. And a year, two years before that, on West River, we spent about $3 million. Now, we, the fire chief came here 10 years ago and said, "We need to complete the 12-inch water main around the perimeter of the island." And most of that money was spent doing that. We also have been replacing some of the seriously deflued old 70-year-old pipes on Meridian last year, that big project at the end of McComb over the ferry. So, number one, we've had an aggressive water main program, and that is costly, okay? And so we had that figured in our current rates, and as other revenue, thanks to the analysis Anne did, actually, as we retired debt, we just assumed new debt by getting that completed. And also on the sewer side, we spent a million, a million and a half dollars last year at our 80-year-old wastewater treatment plant. And we have other issues that we have to deal with. So, we have a very old wastewater plant, it's run efficiently, but it requires a lot of improvements. And so we have to keep up revenue so we can continue to take on those improvements. We have a program each year where, it's a five-year plan of all the sanitary sewers on the island, Joe, where we clean and TB inspect, we'll go through the whole island over a five-year period. And we're, and then when that five years is over, we'll start over again, trying to repair leaks in the system, failures in the system, cavins in the pipe that, from old pipe. We're talking about, in some cases, 50, 60-year-old pipe. So, we have to maintain the system in a proper fashion, or we're going to have a crisis. And I think that people wanted us to do that, and that's what we're doing. So, that's part of the cycle, that's part of the challenge. We do everything we can to keep our rates down. We just don't do it willy-nilly. We spend a lot of time talking about it, and go through our budgets in detail. So I hope that helps answer your question.
Before you sit down, if I may just make the comment, I want you to be clear on this, there was no disrespect for any of the commissioners or you. We've talked about this in the past, I always call you, and you keep me updated on DPS issues, and I personally know most of the ladies and gentlemen on that commission. And I know that's an integrity-filled commission, I know what they're doing, and I know they're doing it for us, and I know where their heart is. I just thought that this was such an issue that, that we can't, we can't do things in another way, because we need revenue. What runs it? Revenue runs it. How do we get revenue? We sell water. That's basically it. I mean, there are some, and there is a couple, like, there's been millages in the past where different things are bonding for, for issues that, you know, big purchases that we had to have, I get that. But the sale of water is really the crux of it. And, and I've thought about it long and hard, and, you know, I come from the police side, not the DPS side, and I'm not trying to say, hey, you guys figure it out, but what I get and, from the people, and obviously, as a board member now, we all have to be, you know, fiduciaries of, of the dollars and cents at Groseal, but I just brought that up as a point, not as, not as a slam. I hope you understand that.
Oh, I didn't take it that way.
Okay, good. I want to make sure you.
No, no, I just wanted to explain that we're not only operating the system, but we're investing in replacing our infrastructure, both in the water system and the sewer system.
And I see it.
Yeah.
I see it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Trustee, your comments are very well taken, and, and I think the DPS commission continually looks all the time at, you know, where the revenue is generated, how to generate it, how to pay for these requirements that we have with our infrastructure that is older, that everybody's infrastructure is older, we're not the only community that has old infrastructure. So, when we looked at the $10 million capital improvement that we have to do over the wastewater treatment plant, there are a couple of different options available to the township to fund those improvements, one of them being rates. And I think the DPS commission had that conversation and decided, you know what, rates are something that is very, a very hot-button issue. We can hopefully design this improvement in a way through our millage request to time it appropriately, so it has the least impact to the residents with a delay in the, in the bonding and a delay in the millage levy, to try to minimize the cost to the residents, or at least minimize the impact to the residents. So, we are continually thinking of, you know, those concerns, and, and any kind of cost that comes up, or an expense that we have to incur, we look at a variety of different methods to try to minimize it and take into account exactly what you had mentioned, trying to keep the rates as low as possible, so when you get that quarterly bill, it's not a, not a shocker, and, and try to look at alternative methods that maybe are a little bit easier to design as far as making it as, as, as least impactful in your household budget as possible. And I think that's what we're doing on the ACO or the wastewater treatment plant millage, is try to, to keep those priorities in mind in designing of that. So, a step, I think, in the, in the direction that you're, you're discussing or you've mentioned tonight.
Thank you, that's helpful. And thank you, Bill, I'm glad you understand where I was coming from.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second. Pending a recommendation from the Groseal Department of Public Services Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves adjustments to both water and sewer rates commencing with the July 2022 billing from $11.68 to $11.84 per thousand gallons for water, and from $4.24 to $4.42 per thousand gallons for sewer. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? No? Next item, Mr. Porcelle.
Yes. Based upon the recommendation of the Groseal Airport Commerce Park Commission, we ask the Groseal Township Board approves funding not to exceed $11,832.52 for the purchase of a new zero-turn mower. The history on it is, last week, apparently they were preparing for Island Fest, and the zero-turn mower that they have right now has failed. They looked at repairing it, they, it was not worth that, they decided to get bids on that one, and the quote received is "A qualified brand through Sourcewell, a Groseal Township contracted national purchasing program." And it is budgeted, the $11,832.57. That's it. No? Nothing, no more for me?
Just thinking about Lionel Easton.
We have, we have a motion and support, and the bow of motion is, based upon a recommendation from the Groseal Airport Commerce Park Commission, the Groseal Township Board hereby approves funding not to exceed $11,832.57 for the purchase of a new zero-turn mower. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Janelle has her new mower, she can start riding it tomorrow.
That's not funny.
RFP, is that yours, Ute?
I'm sorry?
Is the next item yours?
Not that I'm aware of.
Which is it?
RFP.
For Joe?
Yeah.
The police vehicle?
No, 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 that's coming up.
Oh.
Okay, I'll take it.
Yeah, no, I don't have another one.
Okay. The Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes the distribution of the attached statement of qualifications/request for proposals for information technology.
Second?
Thank you. Periodically, the township reviews all their professional service providers against what exists within the market to ensure it is receiving the best services at the most competitive prices. The attached RFP, excuse me, will be advertised and distributed to vendors that can provide information technology services for the township. And once proposals are received, it's intended to have a subcommittee review the applicants in the interest of providing a recommendation to the township board. So this is authorization to, for Derek and, and Mr. Freel to go out for RFPs to review our information technology.
I think that makes a lot of sense. As we were talking with Mr. Forrester, technologies change, and we want to make sure that our vendors are keeping up with the times, and... vendors are keeping up with the times and helping keep our systems running smoothly.
So, we have a motion that the Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes the distribution of the attached statement of qualifications slash request for proposals for information technology. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next one is Uta's.
That is me. I'll try to do this without cracking up in my voice here. The Groseal Police Department is seeking approval to purchase a patrol vehicle and equipment slightly ahead of anticipated. So, Chief Carmack approached me to, and obviously Derek and Mr. Freel to add this to the agenda. The Groseal Police Department patrol vehicle sixteen-five is close to retirement. A replacement had been ordered, and it actually arrived two months before the projected delivery date. The cost of the vehicle is thirty-five thousand dollars and was budgeted for thirty-five thousand dollars. The additional vehicle equipment is quoted at twelve thousand dollars twenty-four and forty-two cents through Herkimer Radio Service and an additional five thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars through Custom Signals. The equipment budgeted is twenty thousand dollars. The purchase of the patrol unit is budgeted and falls below the projected cost. And so, what we're asking is just permission to buy it. You know, we, the commission would have been asking for this in a couple of months, and it's one of those happy surprises. You can't get your refrigerator from Lowe's, but you can get your patrol car for the township. So, we're asking that you support this.
Do I just have a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Oh, Uta, you also?
Yes.
I just got one question. I know Doug left. But I don't know if my paperwork got cut off. I had to go the hard copy because my laptop is still being worked on. But I do not see anywhere on here the type of vehicle on mine. It doesn't say what, what, what kind of vehicle it is. There's a question, and the reason is, I've got a feeling by the price of this, it's an SUV. And there's a, I guess you could call it, for lack of a better term, a, a risk management issue that I need to talk to Doug about. But I'd assume this is an SUV. Would you agree with that from a thirty-five thou, thirty-five thousand?
I believe it's an Explorer.
It's a...
Because there's nothing on either paper to show the kind of vehicle.
It does mention police interceptor utility, all-wheel drive.
Right.
Yeah, that can be also the, the sedan.
Yep.
And through Gornow Ford.
I went through the Herkimer just to see if he snuck it in somewhere, and I, that's all right. You know what? I'll call Doug. Don't worry about it. I'll call Doug, and I just don't see it on there, but I need to talk to him about an issue.
It's a 2022 model year. It says U M Agit, black metallic ebony cloth.
That's the paint and the, yeah, that's the...
But it doesn't say the vehicle. You're right.
Oh, there is nothing on there. That's okay. I'll call him, Uta. It's not a big deal. But there's an issue with SUVs, not, and don't worry, it's not a, I mean, don't worry that we don't have...
And I, to be honest, I don't know what vehicle sixteen-five was that they used.
They, you know, they switch them when they rotate them, so I couldn't...
I'm not sure which one sixteen-five is...
Five was a Dodge when I was there, but doesn't mean it's a Dodge now, so...
I believe it is. I believe that it is the Dodge, like a Charger.
Yeah, that, it was a Dodge when I left, but...
I'm ninety-nine point nine percent positive it's an Explorer.
I'm sorry, I should have caught that myself.
That's okay. I'll call him tomorrow, and I just want to talk to him about another issue.
He'll have the red and blues, so whatever kind it is, you pull over when they light you up.
I'll note that, Dave.
Dave, we don't have much experience with that. Could you elaborate, please?
That was really helpful.
It's just something I heard.
Okay, no...
I'm sure I have the email somewhere, but not, not going to be able to pull it up in time to be timely.
Well, we have a motion from the Police Department Police Commission for approval to purchase a patrol vehicle and related equipment. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We have a new vehicle. This will be action item ten. The Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes the hire of Ross Cuero to the position of Community Development slash DDA Director based upon the terms and conditions of offer of employment letter dated six-three of 2022.
Support?
Thank you. Derek, you want to take this one? Because I know you were...
If you recall, probably about nine months or so ago, upon my movement from Community Development down to the Township Manager's Office, we had a vacancy in the director position for Community Development. We went and combined that portion of my old position with the DDA Director position, which was a part-time position to create one full-time position for both responsibilities. And Uta had mentioned earlier, the combination of positions and reorganization of various job duties within the township. This is another example of that, trying to shore up the DDA position with a full-time individual, because we had a fair amount of turnover in that position. I think a lot had, of that had to do with its part-time design. And then, the Community Development position with the DDA position, they fit very well nicely together because they're similar job duties, and they come across a lot of the same type of things in, in both of those positions, especially with the DDA District and, and the development of that area fits very well with that Community Development position. So, the unfortunate part is, the job market right now is a very difficult one, and I think everybody is aware of that. Trying to find and locate talent has not been an, an easy task, especially in, in, actually, in government, because there has been a lot of turnover, a lot of retirements in that industry, and trying to find individuals to fill positions has been difficult, especially also because I don't, I'm not sure of the, the level of interest that youth has in, in working for the government, but I think maybe it's less than some fields. So, we've been challenged with filling a lot of these positions with, with individuals. So, we, this is actually our third go at advertising the position. We advertise it in a couple of different areas, indeed, LinkedIn, as well as some of the more traditional government advertisement locations like MML, MTA. We did receive a fair number of applications in this third round of, of advertisement. I think I mentioned in here, between all the rounds, we were up around a hundred applications. Not necessarily all of them were quality applications as far as their job experiences and education fitting with what we were looking for. But at the end of the day, we did find a candidate to bring forward to you that I believe we stand behind, has very good experience, has the type of education we're looking for, had a fantastic interview, and has agreed to the offer that's been presented before them and is being reviewed before you tonight for consideration and approval. This individual has background in planning and community development, is finishing up their master's degree in urban planning, and has a skill set that we're definitely looking for, as well as the education. He was interviewed by myself, Lori from Community Development, and our DDA Chairman, and we were all very impressed with his interview and what we feel he brings to the table. And we're asking for your approval, approval tonight to go ahead and complete this employment offer and, and bring him on board.
Thanks, Derek. Any questions from the board? The Groseal Township Board hereby authorizes the hire of Ross, is it Cuero?
Cuero, yes.
Cuero. To the position of Community Development slash DDA Director based upon the terms and conditions of offer of employment letter dated six-three 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Welcome aboard, Mr. Cuero.
Nice to have another Wayne State grad around.
What is it?
Not too many people brag about Wayne State grads, but...
That's a local school.
Stop. The Tartars. Yes.
Or yours now.
Tartars. Just like gum disease, you can't get rid of them. Tough as nails.
Oh, okay. Last, action item eleven. Madam Clerk, I'll let you...
Okay, I, we have put this together tonight. This is a motion to adopt the tentative agreement as print, I guess, the tentative POAM, Police Agreement, as presented by Labor Council at the closed session this evening, subject to approval by Labor Council of Final Language.
Or, oh, sorry. Dave got it.
And I, I would, I don't want to confuse things, so I would ask maybe Derek to just give a, a short summation.
I think probably, what, five months ago, four months ago or so, the board got together to review our priorities for a new contract with the POAM. Their current contract, I believe, expired in the end of March. So, the board got together, developed a consensus as far as priorities. We then reviewed various options for a negotiating team. Ultimately, the board chose to have myself and Brandon Fournier, who is a, a labor attorney that is well-known in the Down River area for being very good at negotiating labor contracts. They selected, the board selected Brandon and myself to, to represent the township and to carry forth the priorities of the board in negotiations. So, over the course of, I think, probably two and a half months, myself and Brandon sat down with members of the POAM and negotiated a contract. That contract, that tentative agreement, was presented at the board this evening in closed session. It is a four-year contract, and it was ratified, as far as I know, this evening by the membership. So, the next steps in this will be to put those terms and conditions that are in the tentative agreement into a formal contract for which will be executed between both parties. So, special thanks to the board for all the hard work you guys put forth in, in development, developing a consensus on your priorities and working with myself and Brandon to make sure that the, the terms and conditions of the contract, the, the conditions that were negotiated were in the best interest, not only of the township, but also in its employees' interest. Because we provide a service, we're only as good as the employees that perform that service, and I feel that the contract is one that is good for both the employees and for the township. That's all.
Case, we have a motion as read, basically, to approve the POAM contract that we discussed in, in a closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we can notify Mr. Fournier in the morning and take it from there. Okay. Clerk's report.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. I'll try to keep it short. From the Clerk's office, through Deputy Clerk Brian Freel, he has, as you know, you, we have mailed out absentee ballot applications to absentee voters on the permanent voter list. And so, please return those, it's always such a hard thing to say, absentee ballot voter applications to the Clerk's office so that we can mail you your ballot once they come in. The absentee ballots themselves will be available on June 23rd. Once we receive the ballots later this week, we do need a few days to prepare them. Ballots will be mailed to those who have submitted their applications next week. And then onward. Candidates for the school board election have until July 26th at 4:00 PM to file an affidavit of identity and a nonpartisan nominating position or a one-hundred-dollar non-refundable fee for the November 8th, 2022 state general election. And I will just say, we do not get that one-hundred-dollar non-refundable fee in the Clerk's office. The Clerk's office will be producing a July Township newsletter that will be distributed by mail to those community members who receive code RED notifications from the Clerk's office. The newsletter will be posted on groseal.com and, of course, also shared to the public via social media platforms. And again, I'd like to applaud Deputy Clerk Freel for this initiative. It'll try to create a kind of resource place for the township. If you have any information from your commissions, from your committees, from clubs and organizations that you would like to spread township-wide, but mainly from the government unit itself so that people have a better idea of some of the things going on. So, I look forward to that. I think that's a really great idea. Currently, I am serving as the temporary Police Commission Liaison, and Chief Carmack did inform me that at our July twenty, I'm sorry, June 21st meeting of the Fire Commission here, the chief and his team will propose to the Police Commission that two sergeants be, that, that two current officers be promoted to sergeant. He wanted me to announce that they are hoping to make that happen at the next Police Commission meeting. If that does happen, I'll be happy to announce it here at the board. I also serve as the liaison to the Fire Commission. And speaking for the commission, again, I want to thank the board for moving forward with the millage renewal request. On behalf of the commission, I also want to thank Ann and Derek for working with Chief Bodry and with Jerry Bredgard and other commissioners on getting, you know, getting the need assessment put together so that we could make the case for moving forward. And, and now it'll be up to the voters, and of course, it'll be up to us to inform the voters, and we'll make sure that they have the facts that they need. But beyond that, as you know, Chief Bodry got toned out again today. Year-to-date, they've had two-hundred-and-seventy-five emergency calls. That's a lot of emergency calls in a short time. That's usually two to three per day on average. Year-to-date, we've had thirty-one fire calls. So, you can see how the nature of the fire department's mission is changing more into emergency health response and, and gratefully away from fire. But, you know, it's a very, it's a very difficult mission that they, that they are pursuing and working very hard to achieve. So, without further ado, I guess that's my report for tonight. Oh, and the, the, the Fire Commission meets again on June 15th on Wednesday, also in this room.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Treasurer's report. For the month of May, Groseal Township had a total of twelve million, five-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, seven-hundred dollars invested in various accounts. These accounts generated a total of five thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars in investment interest at an average, an average rate of point three-four-five percent. Breakdown of the investment accounts is available at the Treasurer's website at groseal.com. The Treasurer's office is also currently preparing for the upcoming 2022 summer tax bill mailing, which is scheduled for on or about July 1st. Mortgage companies have sent tax, mortgage companies that have sent tax bill requests for... that have sent tax bill requests for escrowed properties will be sent duplicate copies of the 2022 tax bills. All Groseal property owners are mailed the original tax bills. And as always, Dog Park passes are available for 2022 at the Treasurer's office for a cost of $10 for residents and $20 for non-residents. The next DPS meeting is tomorrow evening in this room at 7:00. And I know that we'll be, we'll be approving the road millage language as we passed it here tonight. And the next Community Recreation Commission meeting is scheduled for July 7th. Again, that's at 6:00, and that's in this room as well. And I just want to give a shout-out to the Rec Department and Chad Noack for their work on another successful Island Fest. And that concludes my report. Mr. Porserelli.
Thanks, Dave. I sit on the Airport Commerce Park Commission. The meetings are third Monday of each month in this room at 6:00 PM, and I do not have a formal report, Dave.
Okay. Mr. Bletcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do not have a report either for the Greenways Open Space or the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. However, I do wish to take this as an opportunity to thank Supervisor Budney and fellow trustee Porserelli, Treasurer Nadeau, and Clerk O'Connor for all of the work that was put into the selection process for the vacancy in the trustee position that was created when Mr. Jurecki resigned. We had met on Tuesday night, the 7th of June, had an organizational meeting. And we had interviews on Wednesday, the 8th of June, and final interviews on Thursday, the 9th of June. Frankly, it was one of the best experiences I've had on the board here in five and a half years. I enjoyed working with each and every one of you. I thought the interview process was very organized, very structured, and very well-done. The candidates taught each of us or left each of us with something to think about. There has been a lot of talk about honesty and integrity and those kinds of things that seem to have become a buzzword nationally and as well as locally. And one of the things that I saw that just absolutely caused me to sit back and think was one of our candidates, Ted Copley is also a member of the Fire Department. And he was very interested in becoming a member of the township board and had good credentials, a lot of enthusiasm, and frankly, was somebody, when I reviewed his resume, was very interested in hearing from. But the gentleman also noted that because of vacancies within the Fire Department, that he did not believe that it would be a good time for him to leave the Fire Department as required because you can't be both an employee and a member of the township board. And he stood up during his initial, the public comment, and said, "I'm sorry, I have a higher duty to the township, to the people that I work with in the community here, and therefore, I'm withdrawing my application." I just want to say, Ted, that that was one of the most impressive things I've seen in a very, very long time. And I appreciate that as a lifelong resident and as a citizen with family and friends here. And I just want to take the time to say thank you, sir, and look forward to seeing you hopefully in 2024. But again, thanks to everyone here tonight and to Supervisor Budney. It was truly a wonderful experience, and thank you for all making that possible. And that concludes my comments.
Carl, Mr. Assorti.
I wasn't going to say... Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I wasn't going to say too much tonight, but obviously, there's a couple of things that need to be addressed with recent email that we just received. I know you probably haven't even seen it yet, but that I'll address in a second, and some other comments that were made at the board. So, first off, I know what happened. You all know what happened. Everybody in the staff knows what happened. I think it's important for you all to make clear, and I want to clear it up, is the manner in which you conducted the review for the new board member was done appropriately, completely appropriately. I had multiple discussions with the township manager, with the township supervisor, with the township treasurer, with the township clerk about how that process is to be conducted. I want to applaud you for going out of your way to make sure that they were all done publicly because that's the way that it's supposed to be done, and that's the way that you're to do things. You're making things, you made it available for everybody to review. One of the comments tonight, and I just want to make clear because we kind of went through it fast, was that, you know, you did do a tabulation, which is completely appropriate, of your comments about which one was appropriate, that type of thing. But to make clear that none of you, my understanding is none of you, and I hope you confirm that for everyone tonight, none of you deliberated with each other. You didn't get to group and, you know, by email saying, "Hey, I'm going to vote for John," or "I'm going to vote for Janet." You simply submitted those, and there were no deliberations back and forth by email or electronic communications or anything else. And I just want to point that out because it's already been raised. And I want the public to understand before this kind of information gets out that something was done inappropriately, and it completely was not. It was in complete compliance with the statute. You did everything you were supposed to. So, if you guys want to confirm that, that that's the way that it was done, you had the interviews in public, you each individually tabulated your thoughts and processes and put those together so that everybody could review those before they voted, which you guys voted on tonight, which was the public meeting to vote to have the person in. So, you'll understand later. But, okay. The second thing is, I want to address, and I didn't want to bring it up, my Mr. Forrester was up here, because I didn't want to convolute the situation because from talking with Jeff, the benefit to the township is immense with that deal. And it has been going on ever since I've been involved in all kinds of communities. And that, that process is changing dramatically. For years, the revenues from those, from those things, you could bargain against the companies to gather the revenues. That's now changed with the combination of those things. And I think Jeff has laid that all out. Jeff really understands what numbers work and what they get and what can work. But there was a suggestion made that we don't have an ordinance regarding, and there's a reason for that, okay? It's not like any lack of attention by anyone, by the board, by any of the employees or anyone else. So, just to give you a little history, because we've been, we've been dealing with this for quite some time now. So, I was familiar with some of the first lease was 2010, right? Because I think Bill Look had that, had bounced it off. And Bill and I talked about that when I came in in 2011. And shortly thereafter, you know, Congress came out because lots of communities were creating ordinances to restrict this, to say, "Hey, you can only put them here. You can't put them here." If you remember, there were some issues out near the Dearborn Country Club about, they put a huge poll up for cell tower, and they wound up putting a flag on it to get around some things. But there was a lot of litigation going on, a lot of concerns. And the, and the federal government came in and said, "Hey, wait a minute, this is too important for, for the United States as a whole, for little communities to be able to put restrictions on there." As a, as a local resident, I'm not in favor of that, but that's how those types of things work. So, in 2012, there were, there were major law changes that put substantial modifications on local communities. 2013, the Federal Telecommunications Act came out, which limited our caps on some of the amounts that we could charge, modifications to the size and area of what was involved, okay? So, when a, when a cell tower that was, came to you and said, "Hey, we have new technology, and we're going to put the new technology up. We're not going to change the major dimensions or size of what we have." We essentially are not allowed to deny them under that. In 2015, because there was, the Federal Communications Commission came out with directives that said specifically about how those were to be interpreted, again, strongly in favor of the telecommunications companies and, you know, pushing that forward. We really ran into a situation, if you recall, and I don't remember how long ago, if it was, it seems like that it was pre-COVID, I remember that. But if you remember, there was some concern on the island about 5G coming to the island and where they were going to put the locations and all those. We looked into it in great depth, and we spent, the township board, the employees, we all spent quite a bit of time on looking into that issue to make sure, one, that we got the best services we could for the residents, and at the same time, you didn't want a monstrosity across from somebody's beautiful home, you know, degrading the value of their home, and somewhere in the middle of all that. And what we decided after, what the board decided was that realistically, because of the limited areas that we can have large telecommunications devices on the island, we would be better off in the agreements, as was indicated tonight, what's going to be in this agreement, the aesthetic controls within those agreements. So that you don't, in ordinances of one-size-fits-all for all the devices, we would, for instance, so the one, be over where the PlayStation, where the, where the play area is, where the old township hall was, that might be a different scenario than at the police station, than maybe if we ever put one up here, that type of thing, with FAA regulations, that type of thing. So, you want that flexibility, you don't want an ordinance prohibiting you and saying, you know, it's got to be the same in each place. And realistically, from talking with Jeff at that time, we had no idea with the, with the 5G thing, and we really didn't have, basically, what came out with the 5G technology, where you're going to have small devices planted on poles, those types of things. I mean, we, there's nothing essentially you can do other than set some limits. So, our idea was, let's work with the companies, include those in the contracts as to the aesthetic values versus make a one-size-fits-all passing ordinance, and then we're stuck with those specifics rather than having the flexibility of being able to negotiate the specific terms that we want as time progresses and the technology changes over time. So, I just wanted to give you a history of that, that we've spent a lot of time on this and a lot going forward. And it kind of came across as that no one's done anything. So, other than that, there are no changes to 33rd District Court. I talked with staff a week ago. They don't anticipate any changes. Judge Hassan is the chief judge, and she is not, she is happy with Zoom. She's running it very smoothly. Most of the minor charges, you know, the speeding tickets, those type of things, people are on Zoom. And quite honestly, it's working rather well. The hired defense counsel are there, the prosecutors are there, the judges are there, so the paperwork moves fast. But at the same time, the people aren't there, both from a health perspective and a safety perspective. So, they are conducting trials, and they're going forward. And kind of the same thing with Wayne County. Wayne County's, there are trials being conducted. Some of the judges are having major hearings, final trials, or final pre-trial, those types of things in court in person. So, we're getting there slowly, but I don't ever see it going back to the way that it was completely. But anyway, that's update. Sorry it was so long-winded, but I thought it was appropriate.
Tom, to get to your first point there about whether there was any deliberation or anything done, I want to follow up by indicating the way that was handled was, we had, for the first part of the structure, was to go ahead and list all of the names. We had nine names. The question was, how many of these people do we want to interview? We ultimately reached a consensus, and there was a number of five that was going forward. One member of the board wanted to interview everybody. We took a vote, and the majority was, we can accept five. And then of those five, when we finished the rankings, Jim had passed out, again, the names, and we were asked to rank them in order. There was no communication, and I want to make this absolutely clear by myself, with any other board member. I simply put down my first preference. It is as a matter of record. My second, third, fourth, and fifth, I handed that in, signed my name to the bottom of it. I handed it in to the township supervisor. I was apparently the last one to do that. And then he reviewed it because he had indicated to me that we've got five, and yours is the final one. I'm going to review these with Deputy Clerk Frill. And the two of them tallied, counted those together. And it was as much of a free and open and democratic process as could be. It is very hard to look somebody in the eye and say, "Kyle DeBose, these are the positives, these are the negatives."
Right, absolutely.
And it was terrible that way, but after the first one, it gets kind of easy. But it was also something, were there no communications between me and any other board member that anybody could even begin to look at and say, "Gosh, you know, what was going on?"
Great, and I just wanted to make you guys make that available to the public. There were no, in that process, there were no deliberations. And any decisions that you, that were made were made at meetings, properly noticed, all the right things that we did. And we walked through all that. The clerk's office did a great job making sure that was all done. All the, all the things were met.
After three meetings last week, I didn't want to talk anymore.
And you can see the distribution, you know, it's, it's a fair distribution.
Right.
So, I, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to say, Tom, your, your conversation about the cell tower ordinance is well-placed. And of course, with your experience with planning in ZBA, it's some of the issues we go through with our signage ordinance, right? Signs and signage have changed so much in the last 10 years and almost yearly now that our ordinance, we have to figure out how to make, you know, electronic and digital sign commodities work in a, we're still dealing with, you know, the stick-in-the-mud signs, so...
Well, and, and the hard thing about signage ordinances is we continue to get even Supreme Court decisions about the proper language it can be included in signs and those types of things. The, you know, the upside and downside of those things are that those decisions are fact-specific. And so, that doesn't necessarily mean that the next sign that says exactly the same thing in a different community is going to be prohibited as well. So, you try to adjust those ordinance to meet what you think a court would decide, but it's never going to be. That's what makes the signage ordinances. I just didn't want anyone to get the impression from the comments that the township hasn't been looking at that on a regular basis. I know, I mean, Ann, that, that's been an open file with us for, since I've been here, since 2011, and I know Bill looked on it before then, and I know people looked on it. Some of the stuff I have goes back to 2005 and 2006. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Chair, I have one more update. I'm sorry. I did reach out to Chief...
I did reach out to Chief Carmack, and it is a Ford Explorer, the vehicle. So, you were right. It's SUV-ish.
Township manager.
I'll keep it real quick tonight. Just want to let the residents know, a notice went out, I think, last Friday with regards to our trash service. So, Groseal has a two-day pickup, Monday and Tuesday. Hopefully, everybody is aware that the Free Bridge or the Wayne County Bridge will be closed from 9:00 until 6:00 on the 21st, which is next Tuesday. That means that the Tuesday trash pickup, we have to make other accommodations for that in working with the waste hauler. Tuesdays pickup next week will be transferred to Monday. They will be doing a one-day pickup for the entire island. Mondays and Tuesdays will be on Monday, the 20th of next week. Because of this, to be able to get on and off the island one day, on one day worth of service, they are going to have to suspend recycle and yard waste service for next week's trash pickup. So, residents will have to hold on to their recyclables and their yard waste for an additional week. That will all resume the following week with your standard Monday and Tuesday pickup. We did approach the county about switching the day for the inspection. That was not an option based upon the personnel and the equipment that they're going to be utilizing for the inspection. They weren't available on another day, so it had to be on that Tuesday, the 21st. But residents, we just want them to know that that's what's going on, that's what's going into it, and make accommodations to, especially for those on, that have yard waste recyclables for next week, that they figure something else out. Also, for those with yard waste service, their contractors cannot put their yard waste out for that week curbside, so they're going to have to make other arrangements to get that curbside the following week, any yard waste that might have been accumulated by a contractor during next week. So, that concludes my report. Thank you.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I have one question. Mr. Thiel?
Yes.
Can you explain or confirm, rather, that the closure on June 21st has long been scheduled? It is for one day, and it is for the limited purpose of an inspection. This isn't going to be anything more than a regularly scheduled inspection and for one day. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Want to elaborate on that at all, what the county is doing?
No. You know, they, their intent was to, from what they tell us, to do regular inspections on the bridge as required in the frequency that is mandated by, by the state and others. But also, when they raised the load limits on the bridge a couple of months ago, it was their intent to review those after a set period of time to make sure that there wasn't any accelerated deterioration from having the load limits that are posted on the bridge right now. That's part of this. So they're keeping an eye on, obviously, their inspection schedule, but also how the current load limits are impacting the existing piers that were yet to be repaired and also the ones that they did repair. So, and then they will adjust the load limits as necessary if it shows that there's a, an accelerated deterioration. So that's part of what's going on as far as I understand on the 21st and I'm sure we'll get a report as to what they find once that work is completed.
Do you have any idea when that would be? Has the county said that'll be a couple of weeks or a month or what are they looking at, do you know?
As far as the modification, they have not said, no.
Thank you.
Well, you just spurred on another question again. Are we also working with the toll bridge company to make sure that everybody understands that on, maybe on that day, are they going to charge going each way or are they going to open up going off and, and then pay back on? Are the, you know, are we modifying the lights so that the, the patterns are easier?
So we have had conversations with the bridge company about their limits on what can come back and forth across their bridge. They have said that they will not be modifying their limits for that day. So bringing trash across that bridge during that day was not an option, nor will deliveries through other vendors be an option that are over what they've got posted currently. So we've been talking to them about that. They have not indicated to us whether they're planning on a single fee going back and forth, but we will be sure to touch base with them. I know public sa, and get that information out. I know Public Safety has talked to the county about the lights, so that's in process as well. So we are going through the process of reviewing all those items, you know, in preparation of next Tuesday's nine to six closure. So, yep.
Eric, I have one. When you're talking about the trash pickup and the issues that they're going to have on Monday for Monday and Tuesday, can Brian put, because it, it affects so many people, can Brian put out any kind of message? Is there something because it does affect a lot of people?
Yeah, we, we did a code red message on Friday and a Facebook message on Friday that I believe went on Groseal Now as well as the Townships Facebook page. I don't, I don't, do we have it on the website? Yes, it's on the website. I know Priority was also going to do kind of a, a campaign, an information campaign. And then as we get closer to next week, we'll, we'll get more information out or re-put out that information.
Same way, just because that hits more people than anything.
Yeah, and we, we tried to do it on Friday of last week because for those people that had yard waste that they wanted to get rid of, that they, they had to get it out Monday and Tuesday this week, so. But we will put more, we will do it again, we'll do it another push at the tail end of this week.
All the comments.
Young lady.
Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
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 Woo-hoo. Well.